I've asked individuals who are practicing here, what they view as one of the long-term solutions, they say, "We have to find a way to grow your own, to grow our own." You can get them into medical school, professional schools, whatever, and have them return. I know it can be done. I saw the kids who were just in here a few minutes ago. They will be your future physicians, your pharmacists, your gats. It's exactly the kind of thing we would love to see happen. My goal tonight, besides introducing Dr. Fordner and telling her to tell you about the program that's at the university, is we would like, I would find success one way. And that is a year from now, two years, three years from now, we have more students from this school district applying to the VA and the program at the University of New Mexico. Ultimately, the ones who've gone before, who've graduated before, who applied, getting into school. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Fordner, and I'm going to let her tell you about the combined VA program, the VA and D program at the University of New Mexico. Thank you.
Thank you for inviting us. Please pardon this cough that seems to be lingering after a particularly long cold that I had. At UNM, eight years ago, we started a combined VA and D program. This was the vision of Chancellor Roth. This is a partnership between the undergraduate campus, College of Arts and Sciences, and the School of Medicine. And the idea is to alleviate the health shortages in rural New Mexico by training students from rural New Mexico who want to go home and serve their communities when they finish this very long road of training. It is an eight-year program. It is a very rigorous undergraduate curriculum that was specifically designed not only for the science component of the pre-medical curriculum, but for a lot of the healthcare economics, socioeconomic determinants of the health part of the curriculum that actually helps make better physicians. So it has both an undergraduate humanities component and the science component. After the four years, the students, three years in, will take the Medical College Admissions Test, also known as the MCAT. And if they achieve the appropriate milestone on this, they matriculate through the School of Medicine. Four years later, they will graduate and go off to do a residency in their chosen specialties. We are graduating the very first class of VA and D students this year, so the program is eight years old. We have 226 students that have been, we obtained pricing and purchased the devices. Stage three, we configured all the devices at once. Stage four, we scheduled the installation of the devices throughout the district. The last stage, we removed the hardware from the site, we harvest all the parts, and we get it ready for recycling. On the next page, based on the evaluation and the critical risks we elected, we selected all the Windows XP computers in need of replacement. This table shows the location and amounts of Windows XP machines. This count gives us the total amount of machines that need to be replaced, which is 1,255, almost half of the computers in use right now. The table shows desktops and laptops per site that are running Windows XP. As we know, Microsoft ended support for Windows XP on April 8, 2014. Technical support, automatic updates, third-party development are no longer available. This creates a major security risk for the district's network and data, and creates difficulty for utilizing newer applications. The replacement plan addresses these problems by upgrading all Windows XP computers throughout the district to Windows 7 Professional. The next page is the Computer Distribution Plan. This table describes the plan to distribute the new computers to the school labs and mobile carts to improve the quarterly and annual testing environments for the students. It also shows the standardization of computer amounts in the labs and the mobile carts. This will help us ensure that we meet quarterly and part student-to-computer ratios. So far, based on the distribution, all of our schools will meet the student-to-computer ratio for each of the tests. The next page is our Network Interstructure. This graphic shows the district's wireless network. The table on the right lists the network hardware that is the foundation for the wireless network. A majority of this hardware is five to 10 years old. Since the hardware is older, we experience difficulties implementing advanced network features, security features, and improved reliability. To address the limited performance of the wireless network, we upgraded the equipment listed in the table to increase and increase the amount of access points throughout the district. Currently, we have three wireless LAN controllers that control 83 access points throughout the district, one Radius server that authenticates the wireless client to the network and allows it to get on the network and access the Internet. The remaining equipment is all the network stuff that all of these connect to and send the data back to our data center. The next page, we have the technology replacement costs, which shows specific amounts to be upgraded and the values assigned to those devices. This covers a 10-year plan. The computers, the access points, and the application servers are set on a five-year replacement cycle. The routers, switches, UPSs were expanded to a seven-year cycle. This is just a 10-year cost breakdown. This is where we plan to have the money for the bond issue go, to help us replace this, to give our kids a better environment to do our online medicine.
So it's this coming school year that you're looking at purchasing so many?
Yes. The reason we want to do it this school year is because we have the park in the spring coming up, and that's a requirement, and right now the Windows XP won't be able to support that. We barely got through this year's requirement.
So how much is allotted out of the first one? For the tech maintenance, all of it, what we do after?
The thing that I didn't include on this, because I'm not really sure about this area, is the electric drops that need to be installed to support a lot of this hardware. When we upgrade the UPSs, they have larger power requirements, so I'll need to, I guess, go work with Mark and evaluate that, and then also get additional network drops to support the larger labs.
Are there mining schools, like, some?
They will get some, if you look on the K...
How's the, I mean, the networking now, are we tied into some of the, what, online school network?
They're going to be getting a DS3. We expect the metro-optic Ethernet, the DS3, and the upgrade of the wireless WAN to happen in July 1st. So we're going to be starting, getting ahold of the three vendors to make sure that all the services are turned up by July 1st, and the 300-meg Internet connection is available starting July 1st as well.
So this should be pretty accurate?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Item number six, Assistant Student Distribution, I may pre-K grants continue and extended? I'll show you.
Good evening, Dr. Space, Mr. Sandoval, and members of the board. I have three things to share with you very quickly, and then I have a favor to ask. I did want to let you know that the district did receive the K3+ grant, all $417,000. So the principals have a meeting that they will be going to, and first, to learn more about it, and we'll be going from there. Overall, very, very excited about it. My next two items are the continuation grant for pre-K and the extended day grant for pre-K. Pre-K has traditionally been funded for only a half-day program. Our program has always been a full-day program, four days a week, and we have found that it helps kids a lot more with their social skills and with their learning to give them that full day. But we have been funded only for half-days. So our continuation grant is basically the grant that we've been doing for the last several years, $240,000 for 80 students, and we have had to ask for help from GEO and Title I. This year, they decided to do an extended day grant. All that means is that we're getting extra money for doing what we're already doing. And so that's wonderful. And the extended day grant, we don't know if it's going to happen more than this year. We're hoping so. There have only been four programs in New Mexico so far that have been doing the full-day program. Everyone else has been doing two half-days at their districts. So partly because, I believe, partly because of the good results we have had, and I'm sure the other full-day programs have had, they added money for an extended day program, which means we get it, we have asked for an additional $240,000 to continue doing the work that we do. What that has meant is that if we get that grant, we will not have to ask for GEO money or Title I money. We would be able to fund the teachers that have finished their dossier, that get that extra $10,000 that we weren't able to afford. We'll be able to work with the NADYC, and I can tell you what that means if I really thought about it hard, but it's for young children. And it's an organization that we are a part of, and we've been getting quite a bit of good information from them, good contacts, and they have some good resources that we'd like to be able to purchase this year. We would be able to do some more professional development. For the most part, they've had either pre-K professional development or me, and I'm sure they're tired of listening to me. So I have a feeling we'll be able to get some more people in. We're looking at adding, the creative curriculum is what we've been using, and we're looking to be able to get some professional development from them so that we can really utilize the curriculum that we have. I have also put into the extended day grant $50,000 for a playground over at Mount Taylor. They have no pre-K-approved playground at all for those kids, and so we're hoping to be able to do that. And I'm hoping, and I know that you've looked at the dates on these, and they were already submitted, that's part of the favor I need to add. I had the two weeks for the extended day program to be able to get that in, and it was in-between board meetings, and so I was not able to present that to you. So my favor, and I'm hoping that you will approve this, because we're hoping to find out if we've got the grants here in the next few days. But my favor is, the way the grants have been coming down, especially this year, it has made it very difficult to present to you before the deadline. And so what I'm asking is if you have any ideas on how we can make this work better for you, you know, we want to be able to present this to you before the timeframe, but because of the way things are going, I haven't been able to do that, and I apologize, but I need your input as to possibly what we could do. I've spoken to Dr. Space, and he suggests maybe if, when we get these grants, if we're able to put together a draft that we could present to you, even though it wasn't complete, or something along those lines, or possibly email you what we have available. I don't know, but we'd like to be able to get these to you in a timely manner. It's just been very difficult because of the timeframe that we have been given by the BEV, and they have their own constraints. You know, a lot of times, things sit on desks waiting for signatures before they can send them out to us. So I don't know if you have any suggestions or ideas on this?
Well, I like the idea of releasing email or something. It's, I mean, we're, of course, we're going to approve it because it has to do with funding. I mean, we're, it puts us in a hard position, though, and we'll have a special meeting if you need to, if it's, I know we're a week late on the board meeting right now because of last week, but, I mean, you know, just give us some heads up. I mean, in my opinion, we have to approve it. You know, we're going to do it, it's funding, but it sure puts us in a tough spot, in my opinion.
And I did send an email out letting you know that it was going to be presented to you after the fact. But I can't send, you know, like, send what I've got done with it to show you what has been, what has been completed up to that time. I would be very willing to do that, if that would be okay with you.
Most definitely, a special meeting, and I think we could get everybody together, so...
Okay, that would be great. And then to piggyback off of that, she has the same concern.
Same concern.
So, I apologize, I can't stand the door, I'm not on the agenda, but I have the same concern.
Yeah, we're going to be able to act on this one.
No, you're not going to be able to act.
No, you're just, she just...
I was just going to throw it at you and run.
Oh, prior. Instead of emailing it, she wants to...
Yes, in public. No, actually, what I did is, if you look at it, on the 9th of April, Mr. Lopez from the SEB sent me the new policies and procedures that have to be incorporated into my, I did the application. On 4/16/14, which was two days before Good Friday, there was a PED website, a webinar, on how, what this year's application for the IGB grant looks like. Okay, so then, that brings us to 4/22, which is tonight's meeting. And then, 4/25, the allocation announced, the new application forms, and the guidelines are going to be released to all the PED directors in the state. So I don't even know how much we're going to have until this Friday. Okay, next problem is, we have the 5/6 meeting, which is the first school board meeting in May, and then the IGB application is due in Saturday, on the 19th, one day before the second board meeting in our district. So I talked to Dr. Space today, and essentially, what I wanted to do today was just advise you that this is coming, and do your promise that by Friday, when I get all this information from the state, I'll put packets together for each of you. They'll be available at the very latest, Tuesday of next week, Monday for sure, I mean, Tuesday for sure, Monday if I can pull it off. And that way, you'll have more than the typical time in advance of it. Now, what they told us on this webinar was that we could submit our application without school board approval. I don't want to do that, the same reason she does. We don't, we want you to be able to review it. So what I put together is just a basket for you to look at. It tells you the past three or four years, what the allocations have looked like. The second page, I presented this to you at the same time last year, and it tells you more, that's how I broke my application down. So this isn't this year's, this is last year's, but it kind of just shows you where the money is dedicated. The next page shows you the revision to the policies and procedures, which, if you remember, I gave it to you on discs last year, so I'm going to try to have that ready for you so you can have some time to review it. And then the final thing that has to go with our application is our memorandum of understanding with all of the early childhood providers in the district. So my promise to you is that by next Monday or Tuesday, even before the typical Thursday that board meeting packet information is due, I'm going to try to have everything in binders for you, available to you, so that you'll have a little extra time to review it. My hope is that we can, you'll have ample time to review it, ask questions, and we can, I can seek your approval for my grant application on the 6th. And then that puts me in time for the 19th of May. Unless we have to have a special meeting, that would be fine. I will, I'm not deliberately to request that, but I am saying that I'm in the same situation. The time limits that they've given us, as you can see, they're not even giving this information till Friday, but it's due on Monday, the 19th of May.
Just let us know if you do need a special meeting.
Okay, and I think probably, I will let that, if you'll give that concern to Dr. Space, because after having seen the binder that I'm going to give you, if you feel like you'll need more time, then he can let me know that, and we can, I'll be ready for that. So I appreciate it, I'm sorry I interluded on the agenda, but there it goes. Thank you.
If board members' questions, comments? So we have an action item, yes?
I mean, I'd just like to say, I mean, I like the ideas that maybe as far as, as information's available, getting it to us by email or in binders or whatever, that it helps because it gives us time to look over it. And even if it isn't, that's...
There was, I spoke to one lady, I spoke to one pre-K coordinator that had been given the grant, and she had that day to get it done and get it to her board, because that was when they were, they were meeting. I'm not that good. I really wish I were, but I'm not that good, so I need more than a day or two.
Okay. If the board, Dr. Space, I recommend approval of the pre-K grant that is presented. Is there a motion? Second. More favor?
Aye.
No, just one, just one. Thank you. Moving on, personnel, item number seven.
Good evening, Mr. Chair Member of the Board, Dr. Space, just one item for you this evening, the usual list of hired resignations and retirements, it also includes the hired senior 2014, 2015 school year, and there's a couple pages to it, so here for any questions.
Questions, comments?
All right, thank you.
Okay, moving on to item number eight, citizens to address the board. The board advised the viewpoints of citizens throughout the district, considers the responsible presentation of the viewpoints vital to the efficient operation of the district. The board also recognizes the responsibility for the proper governance of the schools in their form and need to conduct its business in a orderly and efficient manner. Okay, questions of the fact that the public shall, when appropriate, be answered. No action or discussion shall transpire among board members regarding such questions or comments. Questions requiring investigation should be referred to the superintendent for a later report to the board. Personnel attacks on staff personnel and board members are discouraged. Okay, with that, I'm going to, first of all, I need to see who's all here to address the board, and what I want to do, if we have a big group, I'd like you guys to maybe combine, if you guys are all here talking on the same subject.
And our group is led by four, four, five of us, and then two children.
Okay, so you guys are going to combine those ones?
Yeah.
Okay, and you are limited to three minutes, so, okay, and who's, who else is going to... Your name, sir?
Tony Boyd.
Okay. Okay, anybody else? Please stand, state your name, and...
And I would like to wait till I hear all the discussion we've had, and then say anything, if that's possible.
Okay, if, are you guys all together?
No, we're kind of pulling time.
Okay, okay. Yes, Matthew?
Great, you're fine.
And like I said, in three minutes? Finn, first, Finn, if you please state your name for the record?
Okay, comments, sir? I'll make it quick for you guys, I just, I have two problems with what's going on with that. I, my daughter, she's been since kindergarten, she's type 1 diabetic, and I just don't see how this is going to benefit any of your students at all. My daughter, the, all the staff, all the people they know my daughter, they know, like I said, she type 1 diabetic, they know when she's sick, when her blood sugar's low, which is extremely, extremely dangerous. You know, these new people that are coming in, they won't know, they won't know my daughter, they won't know what to look for, if she, her blood sugar's low, or if something's wrong. I just, I really don't get it, because I can't, I can't see how this is, how this is beneficial. I don't understand why you guys are, why you're going to this, to our school. That's why I'd say, I'd like to present you guys with some questions, if I can, questions for staff, center valve, board members. Thank you, guys.
My name is, oh, it's on there. My name is, my name is Christian Talasad, and this is supposedly a toxic environment. There are people that are toxic here, supposedly, but I disagree to that, and this is... See, my mom has been working at Simon Vow since, ever since I was, before I was born, actually, and she's been doing there very well. And she gets kids from all over the place, just to go so that she can teach her, or teach them, or, and they teach, just so she could go and teach all of them. She gets people, she teaches all of the teachers around here how to do their job, and it's not always what you're going to do wrong.
Mr. Space, the board, most of you know who I am, I'm Edmilo Lusero. I've been involved with Simon Palimentary for the past 12 years. I was the school board, I was the AAC president for 10 years, interacting with our community, our staff, our families. What's happening there, this year, unfortunately, I wasn't involved in the school. It's a disgrace what's going on. I feel that the board, Mr. Space, I've been to sit and talk to every staff member, like you said, I've been there 12 years, we've been through five or six principals. It all reflects leadership from the top to the bottom. Basically, when Mr. Space said it was toxic there, you're right, there have probably been a few people that have been toxic there, and people haven't dealt with toxic people, but we come in and we want to just get rid of everybody, you need to deal with toxic people, the people that are making our school bad, not coming from teachers, from supporting staff, to, like I said, it reflects leadership. I suggest, or I encourage, that you reevaluate what you're doing, because we have some awesome teachers there. We've lost some great teachers due to toxic, toxic people, and they've moved on to better things. I've got family that works there, I have friends that work there, and just given the opportunity, you need to reevaluate this. We bring people in from not our community to run and make decisions. I encourage the board to stand tall, we're all from the same community, and reevaluate what we're doing. It's, it's a disgrace what's happening to our school. You're not only affecting many families in our community, but our kids, look at, look at these kids, look how much support Simon Vow has here tonight. If they were toxic, I guarantee you, there wouldn't be this many people here supporting. I wouldn't be here if the whole school was toxic. There's a handful, talk to your people, be good employers, listen to them. Think about it. Thank you.
Good evening, school board, Dr. Space. My name's Tony Boyd, and I'm not here tonight as a, representing a student or a staff member. I'm here as a professional. I currently am the Emergency Managing, County Fire Marshal, Perceval Accountant. I've had the opportunity to work closely with Mr. Market in the past during environmental concerns within Bluewater Village and that affected the school. He has been a strong leader. He has stepped up in numerous occasions to not only defend and protect the students and the staff and the school, but he has been there for the parents and the community. He has worked closely with emergency management to help plan for... He has worked closely with emergency management to help plan for future events for things that we don't even wanna think about, such as active shooters in our schools. That's a worst-case scenario, and he has.
... and it's just, it shouldn't be happening. Superintendent Mark Space is taking all of the hard-working and caring teachers and principal from my school and is spreading them around the district. He has said that the school should be getting at least a C on this year's SBAs. Well, if you think that that's, that we will get at least a good grade on our SBAs, then why haven't you taken the time to look at our scores? You haven't given the teachers the time they need to mold me and these kids into the people that they need to be. I've heard that you, Mr. Space, has said that you have been in each of these classrooms, and not once have I seen you individually in each classroom to see what we are learning and to see that these teachers care. I suppose that since the average in the school grades, there's a B, that we are in a toxic environment and the teachers are not trying. These kids need good teachers more in elementary school than ever. Mr. Space, when you made this decision to do this to our school, did you realize that the kids have come to love their teachers and care about them and will not react well to the new teachers? Did you realize that the teachers who work here don't need to be here? They want to be here and to teach these kids. Please, members of the board, see that this will hurt the minds of the next generation that could be doing the jobs that you have now. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Alexis Tomlinson. I'm a fifth grader at Santa Fela Elementary School. And these teachers have been doing a very good job this year. I don't understand why the teachers are just being transferred away to another school. Some of these teachers barely got here this year, and they have been doing a great job with us. The whole situation is going to affect all of the students here at Santa Fela Elementary. Mr. Space, why are you doing this to our school? You haven't been in our classes to see what we are doing or learning. They have all been the best teachers, and if you were at this school and looked at our test data, you could see that they are teaching us very well. For you, Mr. Space, to just transfer the teachers is unjust to students and the teachers at Santa Fela Elementary. So please reconsider your decision. Santa Fela is filled with all kinds of love in our hearts. So please let us keep our teachers that we care about and love. Please think about this, Mr. Space. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Isabel Martinez, and I am a second grader. At Santa Fela, I think that we should keep the teachers because I love them and we learn a lot from them. Everyone who is here from my school, do you want to keep the teachers? If you do, raise your hand. Good evening. Thank you.
My name is Jennifer Beago. I am the CCPU's president. We are here today, all wearing red, to stand in solidarity against the improper transferring of employees, which the action is punitive in nature, and against superintendent's words that Santa Fela is a toxic environment. We have filed grievances for this. Our community deserves better, and today we are submitting. Dr. Space, as the board-appointed custodian of records, we are hereby requesting the following records. This request is made pursuant to the New Mexico Inspection of Public Records Act, New Mexico Statute 14-2-1. Please provide a copy of the following. Any and all complaints filed or documented at Santa Fela Elementary. Any and all complaints at all schools or facilities within the district used for comparative purposes with Santa Fela Elementary. As publicity stated by the superintendent at the PTO meeting held at Santa Fela Elementary on March 31, 2014, and staff meeting held on or out March 25, 2014. Any and all information or formula used to determine the toxic environment at Santa Fela Elementary, as stated during the staff meeting held on or out March 25, 2014. Any and all communication or documentation regarding personal files, staff concerns, as discussed at the PTO meeting held at Santa Fela Elementary on March 31. Any disciplinary, personal files, or actions used to determine or justify the need to transfer staff within the district for the school year beginning 2009 to the present. Any information in regards to schoolwork policy titled "School, Community, Home", "Relations", "Goals", "Priority Objectives", and how it was utilized in determining the needs at Santa Fela Elementary. Specifically, bullet points of policy listed below. Number one, to determine how the citizenry feels about the district and what it wishes the district to accomplish. Number two, to earn the goodwill, respect, and confidence of the citizenry in the personnel and services of the district. Number three, to involve citizens in the work of the district and the solving of its educational problems. Number four, to invite the assistance, cooperation, and understanding of the elected and appointed community officials and committees in the development of educational programs and facilities. Number five, to promote a genuine spirit of cooperation between the district and community in sharing leadership for the improvement of the community. Number six, to bring about citizen understanding of the need for the improvement and what must be done to facilitate essential change. Where applicable, I would request electronic records and information transmitted by email so as to avoid fees. New Mexico Statute 14-2-9(c)(3). If records are not available electronically, please contact me if the cost of copying paper records exceed fifty dollars. Please provide your response to this request in fifteen days. New Mexico Statute 14-2-8d. If all the requested information cannot be provided within that time period, I would ask that you provide all of the documents available within that time period with an expectation of full satisfaction within a reasonable time. New Mexico Statute 14-2-10.
Thank you, members.
I look forward to your prompt response.
And if you could give a copy of the writing, please.
Good evening, Dr. Space, members of the board. Before I speak, I have some information to share with you that I would like for you to really take a good look at and consider before any final decision is made on the transfer of the staff at Santa Fela Elementary. So the decision to transfer the staff at Santa Fela to other schools has been done. So without any discussion, collection of data, and input from any of all the stakeholders. For the past six years, Grand School of County Schools has built a system of accountability by collecting data, recording assessments, bringing us on learning products such as math and reading, also along with NMSPA test results. Just so you know, at the beginning of each school year and also at every quarter, what the staff does is they sit down, disaggregate the data, and then from there, they formulate what necessary steps need to be taken to properly provide adequate instruction. In addition to what you have, I've also given you a copy of the state audit that was conducted this year in November. The state came in and audited because last year we did receive an app. And so they came in, they sat here for two days. They brought in the entire team along with central office staff, interview parents, students, staff members, myself, support staff. And so they compiled this, and based on that, then they gave their recommendation. And their report is there, as well as our response. All I'm asking tonight is urge you to take a serious look at the data that you have before you before you make a decision. The staff here at Santa Fela Elementary is an excellent staff. Majority of them are near to our staff, and they need to be given the opportunity to prove themselves worth. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Hello, my name's Mary Ann Gonzalez, and I'm the one that's gonna get the poops. Anyway, I'm okay for one reason. I fought for our school to be kept open because I wanted our children to have a good school where they could emotionally grow, where they could grow intellectually, and as human beings. Those are three things that they will need on the outside. There is a concern about the change. Life is change. I would rather, I have gone into everything in my life alone, without change, into countries and things that I never did, alone. I have encouraged my kids, "Don't worry about your friend. Don't worry about that. You need to go on alone." Because that effect is the best thing. You're gonna grow up. There's not gonna be mom. There's not gonna be dad. There's not gonna be a favorite teacher there for you all your life. You need to grow up, and that's what school is about. But school is not meant to hurt children emotionally, and there's quite a few in Santa Fe that have been picked on and bullied. I am surprised at the amount of phone calls that I received from parents who have made their complaints. For them, I speak. For them that have had to pull their children, including myself, from Santa Fe to get away from this. And the fact that you used my child in a letter to the editor is totally unprofessional and purely unethical. And if you cannot see that, I have concern. The professionalism on your website is sad. It's sad. And you guys say, "Here, vote. Be, don't be toxic." I took away my child from an environment which turned out to be no growth, no growth educationally. I went back five years of counseling with that child from the crap that they went through. Do I want, do I wanna give the teachers a chance? Yes. But for you that have, that the issues are there, I wouldn't want them, I wouldn't let nobody to know what those issues are. I would be embarrassed. So all of you need to get together and establish you want a school for them to learn, for them to emotionally grow, and I'm talking 100% of the kids from Santa Fe. I wanna see them standing up here with a science spirit. I wanna see our kids there. And if the school needs to do that in order to provide that for them, a fresh start. Hasn't anybody ever had that? We have fresh starts in our life. Why don't we give our chance, a fresh start? I mean, honestly. Oh, I wanna ask you a question. What was our census at the beginning of the school year?
Like I said earlier, the questions will be answered at a later.
Okay, well, this is a question. I wanna know exactly what the census was at the beginning and what the census is, as of January 1st and now.
As I said earlier, the questions will be answered at a later.
Yeah, but those are the only things I want answered.
Yeah, let's do another. Thank you.
Members of the board, Dr. Space, and the community, my issues are, we all, Tracy Torres. We all consider ourselves professionals and ethical. So when you walk in that professional building, that is how you need to hold yourself as a professional. I can tell you that that is not how some of you have held yourself. I compromised. I did not want my child to return at the beginning of this school year. I compromised, and it didn't work. So my child is no longer there, but what is sad is my child still sees disrespect, unprofessionalism that you guys continue to put out there. If that is what you are teaching our kids, yes, everybody has freedom of speech, but that is not what I want my child to learn. So please, take the gift that you're given, that you're gonna be transferred, and leave it at that, and finish the school year as a professional for the children that are remaining at Santa Fela.
Do I have anyone else who should address the board this evening?
Good evening. My name is Eloy Salai. Before I begin, I would like to first apologize to you, Dr. Space, for the lack of respect, authority, or order that was shown to you at the school the other night. I know that you were not invited to the meeting, but you were given the floor to speak, and you were not even given a reasonable amount of time to kind of react or think. You were kind of put in the spot, and I apologize for that, at least on behalf of myself. At the meeting, I said that, you know, teaching is not a job. It's a passion to work with children. It requires patience. It is a self-rewarding job. You see, many of these teachers live paycheck to paycheck, just like everybody else. It takes creativity. It takes the ability to teach others, to find a way into their mind so that they can be taught. And when they know, you know, this child is getting it, and this is how you work with this child, and continue to work with them. I wish that maybe you would have found a way to go to the school and introduce yourself along with your other colleagues or state, I'm sorry, school representatives, and say, you know, "I am here to help." I would like to know what kind of a plan you could have came up with to oversee and follow through and to ensure positive outcome instead of just relying on what somebody else's legacy left for you of issues to deal with. Show Santa Fela School why you are so successful in your other schools and to live up to your recommendations. Exhaust all of your efforts. And at the least, interview each teacher, custodians, the cooks, even the students, and see an inside view of what is going on for the school for yourself and find out exactly who is doing it and what is causing those issues. Create your own vision of a school that you would like to have out there. I come from a public school. We've been in public school up until the last two years. And I can say the problems that you're dealing with, all the complaints, the bullying, that happens in every school. I can say that the teachers in the public schools, at least from the school that my students came from, that my kids came from, they don't have time to deal with any child, let alone a child that has special needs or has a learning disability. I can also say that in any of the public schools, I don't see any of your faces there aside from maybe a spelling bee. I'll see presence of school board presence there. I myself also used to be very involved in PTO. I used to also, you know, help with the book fairs, host the candy sales, come up with all our own ideas such as sham grams for St. Patrick's Day, do popcorn sales, pickles. I saw what goes on inside the schools. I have been there.
Right. Dr. Space, board members, I mean, I had to be called away, so I'm gonna be presenting her increase for lunch. Current price for elementary lunch right now is a dollar fifty. Secondary is a dollar sixty-five. She needs an increase of elementary of one dollar and sixty cents, and secondary one seventy-five. Right now, we get reimbursed thirty-five, thirty-six cents for the lunches that are paid. And she has a comparison here where she did with Belen. In Belen, the elementary is one seventy-five, secondary is two dollars. Moslunas, one seventy-five, two dollars. So we're, you know, we're still within a good count.
And again, this is me, I'm due, if I understand correctly, by the U.S. Department of Agriculture, that we have to keep it to a certain level.
Okay, do I present everything and then you guys vote on it? Is that what, or?
Yes, yes.
I thought this was the part where you said, yes, just pass the cord and please.
Well, Emily and I can remember, we didn't have any kind of luck. Right, that's right. Okay, so just on the milk price increase?
Right.
Then you're gonna go into the expenditures?
But do you wanna do, do I have, do I need to add?
We do, we do it separately.
There's only, yeah, exactly, you're done with it.
I'm done with it.
You know, and that's one thing that, you know, when, when traveling to DC, that's one thing that we had talked about was, was the mills. You know, we wanna be healthy, and it's not, it's not cheap.
You're absolutely right.
And not only that, but if you actually look at the waste, you know, when you go into, you know, it's great, but for not only, I mean, like rural New Mexico or other places that have to be healthy, the cost of the food is just, it's really expensive.
And she's been doing real good with her budget. She has stayed within, and she's got money, you know, that she can carry over for next year. She has not had to borrow from general operations in a number of years. She's said very well, you know, keeping her costs, she's a wise shopper.
Yeah, it's not cheap to be healthy.
Right, yes.
Okay, Dr. Space, yes, so I recommend the proposed increase.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Can you hold a favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then we'll go to the, excuse me, March expenditures. And the accounts payable, we paid out eight hundred and thirty-six thousand, three fifty-four ninety-one. In the activity, we paid ninety-three thousand, four eighty-seven thirty-four. And your payroll for March was two million, two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars and forty-four cents.
Questions? I recommend, I'm sorry. I recommend approval of this presentation. Do you have a motion to accept the approval of the March expenditures? Do you have a second? Second, call a favor?
Aye.
Motion carried, moving on to item number C.
Okay, on item C, I've got three requests to add to our budget. In transportation, they have awarded us an additional twenty-nine thousand, eighty-two dollars even, and we're gonna be putting that in the substitute line item. And the other one is the Carl Perkins. They've given us additional funds of ten thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars, and they're going to put that into supplies and materials. And then in Asha's K3 Plus, we need to spend some of the money now in this fiscal year, and we have to spend thirty thousand, two hundred and fifty-two seventy-one. We have put some in the salaries for the one day, in transportation for one day, and in supplies and materials that she is going to start, need to get this project off, off the ground.
And I just wanna commend the work of Asha and Shp, who, it's through her efforts that we were able to get that. I would recommend approval of the bars as presented. Okay, with that, for a second?
Second.
Hold a favor?
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Before Mary loses down, I just wanna take a moment. I wanna commend Mary Lou and her staff. You know, they, they lost their director on extremely short notice. At the same time, I was requiring them to move in a completely different building, and they did not miss a heartbeat. They, every time, because I haven't been able to move over the, here, there yet, every time I'm over there, I mean, it's just truly professional, the way they have conducted themselves, and they have all stepped up to, to kind of take care of everything that we need to be, have taken care of in the business office and function. So I just wanna commend them.
Thank you, Dr. Space.
Thank you. Moving on to, we take our item number nine, so we're gonna move on to the standard status report.
Basically, I have really just one item. This is something that has been worked on for, or has been attempted to be worked on for a few years, and finally, Board President Estefan and I were able to meet with the Comado Board and the Comado Superintendent, and we were able to work, hammer out this agreement that has been reviewed and approved by our local attorney, Bruce Boynton. And it speaks to something similar to what we have with Gallup. In this case, we have a contention of Navajo kids in Pine Hill area in our district that are so geographically distant from us that it's not viable for them to come to school here. So they've been picked up by Comado and taken to their school without any kind of transportation reimbursement. And Comado is of the size, it, Comado as a school district is smaller than Cubero Elementary. And every penny is accounted for there. And they're financially hurting to continue this, so they, they've asked for us to enter into this agreement, which will be submitted to the Public Education Department. And that way, they'll get some funding to be able to carry out this, which is for the benefit of kids. So I would recommend approval of this.
Any questions? Motion to accept the transportation MOU?
I'll make a motion to approve the MOU.
One second. A favor?
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you. Moving on to the next item, board comments. Mr. Jones?
Well, let me tell you, I got a lot.
Should we get comfortable?
No, I'm gonna keep it kind of in general. First and foremost, one more time, I love the fact that we have student appreciation, that the science fair kids are always amazing. I love them in the science fair. I like watching the awards, I like the community involvement. I like, Mr. Alexander does a phenomenal job as long, as well as all the rest of the teachers, so.
And you understand all the projects.
Absolutely, yes. Mostly, they call me to go over them. I really do like, and I wanna encourage all of us to do more student appreciation. I think it was kind of a tough crowd in front of them today, but I hope they know that I'm proud of them, and I hope they know that, that I wanted to do great.
Well, I think they left also before that, so I don't think they.
I know. One thing I do wanna talk about is the, one thing we tabled was our official term presentation. We had a student coming and doing that. I just want everybody here to know, the reason we tabled it is we wanted all five board members here to hear it. I think the, the boys that are doing it are doing a phenomenal job, and I think we need to give them their due time. So I just want everybody to know that. We didn't decide to table it just because everything else is going on. As far as all of our citizens to address the board, I wish more of them would call me. I only have, you know, out of that whole bunch, one of them called me. I'd love to talk about what I think. I'm in total support of my superintendent. And that's about it. I know it takes a lot of guts, you know, up there, and there's a lot of emotion, and I understand, and I sympathize with how they, how people feel on, on every side. I mean, bottom line, I want our students to succeed, period. And one more time, I'm in total support of our superintendent, and.
So why don't you look at that data?
It's my turn to talk now, you had your turn to talk. And I have what to. I, I think we're doing great things, and I think we have some, some great students, and I just want them all to succeed.
You know, I, we all had the opportunity to go to the National School Board Conference in New Orleans recently, and this is just, you know, it's, it's an annual thing, and it's, there's so many great things about it. It's, you know, it's really all about helping us be better, more board members, helping us be better educated, and, you know, they bring in some big-name speakers, and, I mean, how many people, how many people were there? Six thousand, seven thousand, I think? I mean, so it's, it's a real big crowd, and it's, it's a fun thing to be a part of, but. Magic Johnson was one of the speakers one day, and, you know, his main message was the fact that he's a product of public school, and, you know, he is so.